That was just that's I think that had my just a title. Who regret?
We'll start with the Fudge Legions.
United States of America to the Republic of America.
First up, we've got the meeting minutes from last month.
AKA the greatest meeting of all time.
Under board reports, which is trustee so much of the tablet for the annuals that's finally arrived, it's actually the bill for the tablet. The tablet has already been here. And it was the bill. Reimbursement.
Megan Smith. Second. All in favor? Yeah, I'm abstaining because I wasn't. All right. Got anybody for public comment? I don't know if there's anyone on Zoom. I make sure that they, you know, chime in. All right, we'll jump over to the treasurer's report. Dennis is here and Jim is still here as well, so.
I don't really have anything specific on the pressure reports like I like I said. Probably really focused down. If the payroll is done. Obviously, there's enough on a lot of those bills that were kind of dragging behind. I don't know with vendors.
Yep.
Can you see these voices hopefully return on that.
I didn't have any questions on the mills.
I think it's worth recognizing, you know, we've got the ready bill, right? So we're wanting to take one point per million.
The first reimbursement.
First reimbursement.
Seventy-five percent. Yeah, that came in like that October or September thirteenth.
Oh, we got reimbursed.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we won't.
The bill going out.
We won't need to use that bar resolution at all.
I got a call from Marcellus yesterday. They said there was another application out there for like another one point two million dollars. I said, I haven't seen it yet. It's not this.
Yeah, I don't think we, yeah, we've got a few requests for pay in here, but that one I don't think made it.
That should have went through BCA anyway.
Yeah, I think they, I think they, it's probably on their desk now. Take it that. All in favor? And let's see, I saw the bills you you both did. Okay. Do we want just a proof of three then?
I saw him too.
Just in case Dennis has to take off, I don't know what your ability is, but before we jump over to the department reports. I I blame Peggy, she she spared him away and Dennis is gonna help us through. Dennis decided that actually working full time for the village and the town wasn't his dream retirement. But he's gonna help us out until we get somebody else hired, but we do have to post for a more full time position. We, I don't think we need a vote to post the job, but we will need some discussion before we actually hire anyone. But I just want to let you guys know that that's something we're gonna do right away so that it may take some time to find somebody qualified and interested in all the other criteria. But no, we appreciate you helping us and keeping the lights on.
You can tell me later, please, what something she said. Um, how long, I'm sorry, I missed the term of the.
Well, the original, yeah.
I I would shoot for the end of the year. I think I talked to Alex and Jim. Personally comes in is, I think is gonna need some support. And, you know, I'm certainly willing to help out wherever it can and not not leave them struggling and drowning too. We want somebody that comes on and stays around for a while.
We got two months. We'll post immediately then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Deliberate for a second.
So we'll, we'll move on to the department reports and start with Lynn so he can get his digs back in here.
You have my report, there any questions on it? As usual, I I forget to put things in there and I do have a couple extra things. But if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those first.
Any, any issues at all with the water going well?
Water's going fantastic, actually. Yeah. Very happy with it.
I've noticed it doesn't taste like hundred year old iron anymore.
Have you noticed that?
You, I don't know that I could tell the difference. We should have bottled some up to taste.
Raw water coming into the into the plant is different.
Yeah. It's it's farther out, right?
Maybe a little bit, it's roughly the same.
Okay. That's interesting.
Um, one of the things was I was just discussing with Sarah here, she put a driveway in her house over here on General Smith. And we have some no parking yellow lines on a corner. What I want to do was extend those yellow lines over past her driveway. We just want to make sure that you guys are on board with that. It's gonna take some more road parking away for good fellows, but whatever. Her, her tenants have a right to get to the driveway too.
Yeah. I just happened a few times.
Is that where, is that where we put the ones originally, so the RNC chart or whatever?
Of course, is the driveway on Chapin Alley or is it?
No, it's on, it's on General Smith.
It's right across from the hotel lobby and like because the lines are there, people drive up and they don't look to the right. And they just drive to the line and then they're blocking the entire driveway.
Yes. Um, one other thing I forgot to put on here too is we had a cemetery cleanup. Thank you to Mr. Altieri for gathering all three military guys into doing a lot of work up there in a short period of time. But it's fun to get Dave to go for that great thing.
For job? Yeah. Was it a partnered unit?
Yes.
Great.
It was great. I happened to be out of town that day, but they've handled it quite well, so. And other than that, I'm good. Thank you.
Any other questions for Lynch?
Real quick, roof on the fire hall.
Yes.
It was a rep, obviously not a replacement.
Yes. But did I, well, did I replace it?
No, you didn't. It just says completed. And the last meeting, I think we were still kind of debating whether it was gonna be a replacement versus repair.
They took the skylights out, which were the main, the the source of water in the the fire department. So those were taken out and they redacted. And they had the some five gallon pails and the only best way I can explain it is it's kind of like liquidized rubber. And they roll it down there and when it dries, it kind of almost turns to rubberish up there. There's a guy who did it, AJ, can't, that's how, Anthony, something.
It's AJ.
He's given us, Albert, he's given us a five year labor warranty on that or guarantee. And the manufacturer of the roll on rubber stuff is another five years too. Recovered for five years.
Yeah.
I went up and looked at it, checked out a couple random events, there's no water. So.
He said one thing that we need to have a regular, like six month or however often scheduled to get the leaves off of there. Because once they block the drains, they have standing water and that's that'll be an issue, so.
Yep.
I don't know if you guys already get up there sometimes or.
Probably not enough, Alex, but we're, yeah.
I think, you know, I would say like if it's a fall issue, then maybe in the spring.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we're trying to do if the weather's decent, we can get up there without slipping and sliding up there, ice, whatever. We'll try to clean it out because the leaves drop. Boy, speaking of which, leaves, we're probably gonna do a cleanup at the middle of November. I'm gonna wait till the leaves drop.
Yeah, you guys usually throw it on the, the.
Yeah. Thank you. Great, oh, guys, thank you.
All right. Next up, Officer Gleason.
I I uploaded my report there. Um, one thing Stephanie from Water Town Savings Bank invited me again this year over to the Harbor Heights Department. And we presented about fraud and scams that target mainly target the elderly as far as like that. Your grandson's been arrested or been in an accident or any of the recent types of scams that they're doing to try and get free money. Um, so that went really well, there was quite a few people in attendance and I heard a lot of good things about that. Um, another thing I talked to Doc and Phil today too about the beagle or whatever that home. I don't know where to transfer over that originates from because they spent a good part of the day trying to catch it in the cemetery. And so you know, help them transfer over that. It's the new Benny, I guess.
This isn't the one that's with Husky, right?
He didn't mention a Husky, but I thought before when it was posted.
It was with the Husky.
They were over by there, they had like mansion collars, it definitely not abandoned and it was the one of the allens posted on Facebook that they got them, so I assumed it was their dogs. But it was the pair and I don't know if it's always the same beagle or if it's a different beagle and.
He thought maybe it was coming from the barracks because it kept running and coming back from there, but I don't know. I said I'd try and go through the many, many posts. Cause it was just sporadically, but then it started becoming more frequent, not as much as Alex's dog.
Right.
Joel almost hit it on his truck the other day and ran right in front of him and it like ran out from behind the school. And he had it slam out and like.
The day that he posted about those two, I was out chasing my, I I've adopted a Husky, which was probably not the right move is Houdini, but. I just, there might be a theory that I don't, I think we're overlooking right now. Could it be John, in your best opinion, great pumpkin?
You know, ever since we got that new water, the dog has been going.
Trying to keep this under an hour.
Talking about beagle losing its baggage, it's a great pumpkin. Wonderful brownies, yeah.
Did anybody have any questions?
I'm good. Thank you, sir. Anything from the fire besides that we owe them some money? Dave, you're up, sir.
Okay, oh, yeah, you have my report also. I'm busy. Um, I finally made some progress on the NYSARDA CEC, the Community Clean Energy Community Grants. And we've been approved for trees. I've been working with NYSARDA on those reactions, so they award, they award points to the village and then that enables us to get grants. So I'll have a better report next month about where we are with that. I noticed that the down in the old business electric charging stations, I've I've been working, I've kind of moved that now that we've finished some of those other ones. Moving that to the front burner, so I don't know if there's anything new on that.
Yeah, I I was looking for them for the hotel anyway, so. Yeah, it's like, well, send quotes for the village if you want and I have a few, I can refer to you if you want.
Yeah, we have, we're not gonna use them. I'm just. Yeah, I mean, I've got the list, there's a list of approved contractors.
Yeah.
That you have to go through and we have, because of the village, we have to do kind of an RFP.
Yeah, all of them are on that list and the the thing is right now they're all free.
Okay.
So the the effective cost is zero, you have to commit to like five years of using them and they get twenty-five percent of the revenue. And that's, I, what I found is every single one I've gone to, that's their standard contract. Um, I ended up, I'm just gonna put one like the one in my house.
Yeah.
Just to people, just unlock it on request because it's way, way cheaper. But it doesn't make sense for the village, we want to have people be able to park and plug in and pay. So we have to kind of use a commercial one for that.
Right, right.
Um, so I can send them over to you, I have a couple that have actually specked out where they would put them.
Okay.
Uh, one is between the two parking lots right now along that strip. So they take the power from the the post, the light post and run chargers so you can charge two cars on each side times two, the four cars total.
Right.
Um, but I'll, you know, I I think it might dovetail with the clean energy stuff.
Yeah.
So I'll just gather all the contacts and things and send it to you and then if you want to run it, you can, or if you want me to help either way.
Yeah, yeah. Cause there's potential nicer grants for those.
Yeah. Yeah. In the quote, that's how they get it to zero dollars.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
There's also a possible grant for this subsidized housing for Sackas Harbor Housing. They're having a Zoom call on it and information call on Thursday. Betsy and I, Betsy Reagan and I are gonna sit and have prayers, but that looks pretty promising. On banners, the school does a Veterans Day ceremony every year. They're gonna use some of our banners, incorporate that in and have some of the the students introduce or talk about people that have been honored. I think, I won't say anything, but I think you're some have some role in that. But it's good just to have the banners used during the offseason, they were taken down as always a couple weeks ago. So it's good to have the banners used and they'll use them during the ceremonies, so that's great. Um, ribbon cutting for Ready LWRP, haven't heard anything back, so October is looking.
Part of the issue too is we can't open the Robinson Hill until the railing comes in and the railing is backwards.
Five weeks.
Yeah.
Well, and I think that was, part of it was they wanted, they want to know all the work is gonna be done. So I don't know if you want to put it off until the spring.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it looks nice now, but officially it's not up to code and.
Yeah.
Uh, I think the BCA guys and Lynn kind of thought it's not worth risking an insurance issue to open it.
Oh, yeah, no.
This late season for two weeks. So we'll keep it closed, I think, until spring. Once the railing's in, we can open it for winter use if it makes sense.
Yeah.
And then we can, you know, when the weather cooperates, we'll do a ceremony in spring.
Okay. Um, that's about all I have.
Um, I saw you, you've got the zoning stuff in here.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I I scanned it, but I haven't gotten a look at it yet. This is addressing some of the audit concerns?
Yes.
Just to catch around, we we got a uh, what's, what department was it? So it stayed.
It's um, South Parks.
Okay.
Yes.
And they.
Or Preservation.
Basically, they don't like that we have our planning board also doing a historical review.
No, they they do like that.
They said they were, the the one that I forwarded to you guys, they thought we should have a separate board.
Well.
Which is.
That's just not easy.
Right.
What they want us to do is document that the planning board do a better job of documenting that the planning board is also functioning as a historic review commission. That's the way it's been done.
Right.
Since we had a historic overlay district. Um, so we went through this last time with them, we just.
So you think that separating the forms out will be sufficient?
Yeah, and 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 document the fact that the planning board is also a historic review.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool. So that's part of the.
Yeah, that, yeah, some of the forms, I mean, some, we, for example, we've never had a subdivision application. So anyone who wanted a subdivision, there's never been an application, so we came up with those, but some of those forms. And we're having a call with a person next week to, and it it's just a matter of frankly, better communication.
Sure. Can we get these into the Google, like the Google docs so that we can like look through them and make like changes, suggestions?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, cause it's just easy that way if it shows you who suggested what change we can. Um, and then Peggy mentioned that we had a lawsuit in the past because we need to make it very clear at what dates the new forms are in use. So we don't have it, there's not any like defined urgency on these from the audit, but something to note that when we do get the final docs, it'll be a formal recommendation from the planning board to use these. And then we will review them, but in the in the interest of not doing fifty million formal reviews, I'd like to at least have us get eyes on it before we get to there so that we have any obvious subjectives or changes.
Yeah, so we'll put them on Google Docs and maybe during the next month, have the board comment and then maybe approve them.
Yeah, once you guys are happy with it and we've already said like, you know, we don't have any obvious concerns, so we can do the the formal approval process. And then maybe we kick it out and say January one or sixty days or whatever, we can see if there's any standard like duration of notice that we need.
Yeah, during the.
Yeah, it's great.
I would say this is four, right?
No, there's, there should be six, I think. If there's not, we'll make sure that you have all six.
Can you just show, where's the part you put, made some changes to the temporary outdoor eating structure?
No, we're just, we're still considering those.
Oh, okay, I was looking for it, I'm like.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 um, we, we had a meeting a couple weeks ago where this, this is the zoning revision. So we're gonna come up with recommendations.
Okay, I thought it was in.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry.
And it's understood.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's start first, it's, okay, great.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, anything else for Dave? Thank you, sir. Kathy?
Uh, we had just under five hundred people visit us at the visitor center in September. For this past weekend, we are now closed for regular hours for the season, but we will be open for Halloween though on October twenty-sixth. And you'll tie on October twenty-sixth. Second weekend of summer, I'm sorry. Anyway, those are our last days. We had a, our last was yesterday morning. Um, we had about twenty or so people attend. Um, we've already got a few bookings for next season, straight. Um, and then also, uh, we did, we have the new hometown hero banner application ready to go. Peggy's got it in the office.
We know how many polls we have left.
I don't know.
If I can subtract the the ones that are not.
Yeah, we're gonna be retiring enough through.
Got it, and do you, do you give them the banners, like?
We give them the option, they can either renew the banner or take the best or take your banner if they want.
Okay.
So last year we had about a hundred or so retiree retired. So.
It's just so they get kind of worn out?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, the banner application is at the village office, we have a visitor center, although that's less helpful right now. Post, um, it's also online too. Uh, so if anybody wants to submit an application, please do. The deadlines are roughly the same as this year, um, although we will maybe consider. Just to be able to make sure we have enough time to get. So they're, they're up.
Does the application go in a weekly email to people? I I often hear that people don't, you know, they're not aware of that.
It has.
Yeah, we have sent it out, not this early, we have sent it out. I mean, that's.
For a few weeks if not.
Yeah, we.
I just thought perhaps do an ad and if you made a graphic on Canva, I can show, put it out there.
Yeah.
I often get people that are like, oh, I didn't know we were.
I tried to post it on this, it's like February, the Facebook and Instagram channels every year when we open it up for applications. And then a reminder like, they're due this weekend or whatever, but yeah, we can try and get it out there more. Uh, and then here's another thing I want to mention, there's the tourism conference coming up next month. That the Thousand Islands Tourism Council, they're doing a bi-national tourism summit. It's happening in Kingston on November thirteenth, the cost is just twenty-eight dollars per person. We have money in our budget for staff ratings.
I'm going. I mean, if you guys end up there, let me know, we'll try, you know. Or at least we can, if there's different like talks, we can try to make sure we're not.
Purple, go down on the.
I'm actually going ahead of time, zooming into the meeting because I don't want to get up at five in the morning to get to seven AM.
Yeah.
It's a Tuesday after, it's the day after our meeting.
Oh, Jesus.
So I'll be, I'll be internationally attending from twenty miles away.
I'll rather be in a big, quick, quick.
We're on, we're doing well, we're on track here. All right, I do have one question with the, so I did the credit card machine fees, is that yearly or monthly?
That is monthly, we're looking at to square because apparently we just keep if we more charges we have, the higher the bill gets.
Yeah, cause I mean, you fold in one ninety. So that's a pretty high percentage. Yeah. That's the water on savings as a.
I had to ask Shannon, I should explain this to make them understand it. It's from a credit card company, but apparently it's already been a, it's, it's already come out as an ACH debit from the account. So she had put it in before as a, as like a reimbursement thing, so that's why it's listed that way.
All right, yeah, I mean, we should be able to get that down to like
if we set.
Thirty bucks, twenty bucks. Thirty bucks, twenty bucks.
Yeah. And we just turned it off, I think, and we just.
Right, yeah. Um thought I don't have anything else, any questions for Kathy? I actually do a quick rewind, Dave, the guy with the museum, he said it got delayed, or or does that still happen?
The exhibit?
Hmm.
Yes, yeah, that's that's the temporary exhibit, I put it on my report, I think exhibit.
Okay, so that's going in the.
Yeah.
I thought it was going in the, it's going in the visitor's sign.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're pushing it to spring?
Yes.
Okay, great.
We needed it someplace where we'd be staffed.
That's fair.
Yeah, so.
Cool, okay, great, uh next planning board, we've got next two major on here.
My question is, do you have a phone? I noticed that they, I thought we didn't ask for applications for replacement fences. Like, if there was already a fence there, why did we make someone go through a whole application process to replace a fence that was already there?
Maybe they have to if it's a mental overlay.
Even if it's a replacement?
If unless it's an identical replacement, if they change the material.
They were changing the material.
Okay.
But they were told they had to go through it, which delayed it, and now they're worried about getting it done.
Okay. Fair enough, let me.
I don't know why.
This is uh John, Dave?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just curious, I just make sure I'm telling people the right thing, I thought replacement, they didn't need to fill out a new application. If they weren't changing what the fence was.
Do you know?
I wouldn't, the materials aren't the same and the height and everything.
Right, I'll ask.
And it's like.
It was maintenance, they were just simply replacing what was already there, um they had to get a seeker, they were asked to do all kinds of stuff. Which I don't understand why they made them do that to replace an existing.
Okay, I I wrote a note, I'll ask her.
Okay, but I, they already had a, that's why I'm just gonna figure out what the rules are, they already had a fence there, it was already approved, and they're just replacing it. I don't wanna create an extra burden.
There's no reason for it.
If we don't need to.
I'll uh, I put a note to. I don't know, actually, let me write this down, that was for Kathy. Boy, I can answer you.
I think I know the answer, but I'm not gonna say it here. I think I know more about it, but.
All right. And let's see, it has this, before we jump to the engineers, they have a note from uh James about Dodge app. I did chat with the town about it, basically the town board doesn't interface on these matters with the town court, really. So we need to ask the town court about how this was done, maybe John might know. When they did this uh guilty verdict towards violating the zoning law, you were there?
Oh, which case?
With uh KJ?
Uh I was there, yeah.
Did they say, like, Jim seemed to think it was like a per day thing?
Right, uh the way it was explained to me, it was a town game thing, like each week a report would go into the court um from Jim.
Okay.
And then it would just build up and build up and build up.
Okay.
Um I did mention that at the town court to the clerk and ask. And then there was some discussion about whether that was in fact the way it was written, even though that was the way it was.
Discussed.
Discussed, so they were trying to get to the bottom of what.
Okay.
The decision actually was, cuz I know our lawyer, uh Ms. Harringer was under the impression too that.
Okay, and and the clerk is Cheryl?
Yeah, Cheryl Pan.
All right, I'll check in with her then.
Do they need anything from us to move forward? Because I see this letter that he's now encroaching on his neighbor's sidewalk and doing some other things.
I know, I stopped within the last month, and he he was outside pressure washing and painting. And so I pulled up with a pickup, and I had stopped here already and printed out the uh. Like the part about you can't block the sidewalk, all you know, just uh informative, nothing punitive or anything like that. And I stopped to simply have a chat and say, hey, could you move it so the kids don't have to walk into the road on their way to school? And he was outside on the sidewalk, I pulled in, before I could even open the door and get out, he was. Running inside and shutting the door, I tried to talk to him through the door. And explain, and you know, just basically say, nobody's been in trouble, I just need you to move the totes, and then that did not. Prove productive, so I wrote a note on the village ordinance that I printed out and said, please remove the tote from the sidewalk to allow safe passage. And just kind of tucked it on the door, and I see they, most of the time it's clear, so people can walk through, it doesn't do anything for the aesthetics of.
No, I feel like it's gotten worse.
Yeah.
Sometimes I feel like I'm stressed on the sidewalk and working on it, scared me to death, I, it was dark. There was a light underneath the truck, and I didn't realize he was actually under the truck in the dark, like, caught me off guard, and I was like.
Yeah, um some someone asked me about it today, and um their specific complaint was that those totes. Are still encroaching upon the sidewalk, and it's been. It it's probably been over a month at least.
I know they keep moving, it's like not notice, not noticeably deprived, but they are like, sometimes it'll be like. A foot over this way and a foot over that way, I think what he does is he hauls stuff and keeps taking them out of the truck. And putting them in the lawn and puts them back in the truck and, but yeah, it's definitely growing.
Yeah, it's worse than it was before we went to court.
If not worse, it's just as bad, I I do think we need. I don't know, we need to figure something out.
I'm not saying we're there yet, but the definition of sanity is, you know, keeping the same things, expect different result. Okay, Alex, about this a little bit, I mean, there, I feel like we have no teeth, right, I don't feel like the 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 town court i- is is on board with us, I feel like, you know. We're not getting the result we need, so maybe we go around them a little bit, and I think one, I forgot who mentioned it, but. What if we brought the state health department and take a look?
JP mentioned that.
Maybe something like that, and we use those guys as the enforcement mechanism, they come in, they do a survey, they take a look at it, they probably have more. Capability and more enforcement tools than maybe we have, I don't know, this this is this is a shot in the dark to maybe try to even approach, because we're not getting anywhere with this.
Right, right, and that's the same thing, like uh I, when I was talking to the court about, I mean, there's been multiple court cases, whether it was with the dog. The dogs or like the zoning stuff, and they keep assessing fines and doing guilty verdicts, but.
One of the things that.
Here we are.
One of the things that uh Burrows and I, I talked about this for escalation, and um. We can do a separate court case after some amount of fines are accrued, uh to basically put a tax lien on the property. For the amount of the fines, it's an entirely separate process, but at that point. Um he would have to pay them or potentially foreclose on the property. Um I don't love that, I I I actually, when I talked to Jim about it, I was like. Uh insofar as he would actually hear any words anyone has to say, I would like to use that as a stick to get him to proactive, but just just fix it, so we don't have to do that. No one wants to take your damn house, we just want you to shit in it. Um but I I don't know.
Tried everything, we've tried.
I understand, yeah.
Yeah, and the section that I printed out, like the the lot, the village ordinance that I printed out, it even stated right on there if there was stuff on the sidewalk, then technically the DPW could come. And remove it and clean it up and then bill the homeowner.
Yep.
And I was trying to explain through the door that, I mean, we don't want that to happen, I don't want them to take your stuff, but at the same time. We can't have it be like that.
And I'm nervous to send our DPW up there knowing that he's not.
He would be escorted, but please don't.
I would hope so, yeah.
Yeah, you would do that, and then also probably. I don't, I don't know if you'd want him to be there or not there, frankly.
I don't know, which is better.
It'd be very, we tried to hug approach, you, you befriend this guy, right, and we've tried to, you know, to civil about it, it's. We're at a point now where we have to figure something out, because we're all hearing it from different people in the community. Yeah, no, it's not, it seemed like it got a teeny bit better for a short amount of time, and now I'm like, every time I go by. Okay, um I'll talk to Cheryl about what the court needs and or can do to like verify that the the fines have escalated, because. I think it doesn't make sense for the village to spend two grand filing all the legal work to move this into a lien, if it's a lien for the two hundred fifty dollars. Right, cuz then.
Have you gotten the bill, do we know? Cuz that's the other thing, I mean, I don't think he would pay us, but I would like to see a copy of the bill to say, he's at least on bill.
Yeah, I know, I know he's been assessing the fines and they've done judgments. Um on that and his other case, because in um the other case with the dogs, he actually uh was filing an appeal. And then had to hire a transcriptionist to listen to the whole court case and print out word for word what was said, who said it. And then I was trying to file an appeal on the appellate court.
Well, I'll follow up with Cheryl and see if there's anything, we need to get. Kind of get what that number is, so we can see if it is currently enough of a disincentive to maybe go through the the process of getting a lien. If it's not enough because it wasn't done properly to make it recurring, then we'll figure out, can we get Jim doing the report he needs to do, so that the court will figure that out. And then maybe.
Do you mind helping do that in parallel?
Yeah.
Before I just reach out to the health department, see.
I think the more departments that show up at his door, maybe we'll get somewhere, yeah.
Okay, they probably have one of those enforcement sectors.
Yeah. All right, anything else in the back, guys? All right, on to Brendan.
All right, good evening. Uh so, our square park phase one project, uh lawmen submitted their final, or final payout request for a little over sixty four thousand. So that part of the project. Phase two, we had a substantial completion walkthrough on September thirtieth and established a punch list, and so that is. Essentially complete with the exception of a few items. For a little over two hundred, twenty three thousand for phase two. Um so FEMA, um so I've been in contact with FEMA, I submitted the final disbursement request on Friday. Um it looks like so FEMA, depending on what the cost is, what we estimated versus what the actual construction cost is, they'll. They'll pay for overages, um so with that request, we had allow almost nine thousand dollars of potential additional funding from FEMA. Um FEMA also mentioned that, starting in twenty twenty four, they understand that there are administrative costs associated with. With coordinating with FEMA, so they mentioned that there is eleven thousand dollars available to cover administration costs, and. I think that there's an email coming to Alex shortly, if you haven't received it already. Because they had, they had a, I think the previous mayor, they had him on air, there was a coordination issue, so you're the new contact, there should be some information on that. Now FEMA is kind of a black box when it when it comes to like submitting something, you don't know when you're gonna get something back, it takes forever. Um you know, kind of blindly estimating what it would take to administer that eleven thousand, I kind of estimated two to three thousand just to, for the back and forth. And getting together the backup, so I guess the question is, you know, would you want to proceed? With.
Yeah, I did see that, I figured we'd chat here, but I I wasn't sure if I needed, I think it's pretty straightforward, if we think it's eleven, it costs two to three.
I'm hoping it's less than that, but sometimes it's, they require a lot of people.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I know we don't reward guarantee, but it's pretty solid, we can get them eleven thousand back.
I think so, um if it's as easy as they're saying it is, potentially, we have our invoices that we submitted to you guys, we have backups of. FEMA information things that we could just submit to them as backup.
So you guys would just be billing us hourly for that paperwork?
Correct, yeah, it's not gonna be, this is it, it would just be hourly, hopefully it's less than that.
I don't know, I mean, I, I think it's okay, yeah, seems like a risk, it's a gamble.
Um round towards pump station, um we're looking to start that back up for the next week or so, uh the pumps have been delivered and the enclosure has been delivered to the subcontractors. So the water intake, um we were substantially, not substantially complete, mostly complete, uh sea wall will be complete within the next few days. Um I know that there's been some coordination with funding, actually, because yourself, Jeff.
Yeah.
For submitting funding information, and it looks like uh. Brass seed and and final, a chunk will be in the spring. Let's see here, so I and I study, um so I rode around with Jared a couple of weeks ago for to kind of observe manhole flows. Gonna be honest, it's pretty arbitrary where to find it, I mean, there are flows coming in. I know originally the scope was right around the Ray Street area, this is how I, I would started, Ray Street, there was flooding. I know we did the third alarm parking lot, I think that kind of resolved. I believe, pretty much, you know, there's less or no flooding there anymore. But we'll just have to have a conversation just to kind of narrow down the areas, I know that the the funding agency wants to see a project out of it. So, you know, versus have, you know, reviewing the whole village, it was supposed to be a specific area, so. I think we're finding that the flows are coming down Main Street and potentially Madison Barracks, where it seems to be the most close. That's just popping manholes and kind of chasing it.
Yeah.
Sit the village. So um we sat to more conversations with that, and uh I think the help maybe narrow things down. Um the notice, I think we talked about that.
Yeah. I try to just like take out anything that wasn't, you know, I'm simplifying a lot.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I'll send your comments over to these guys, I basically, they had a one pager explaining what it is, and I made it like. Maybe fifty words instead and put some graphics on it, so I'm like, if no one reads it, they're not gonna, cuz the goal is that they take it, read it, and then fill it out and either give it back. When they pay their water bill or mail it in, so I was like, the fewer words on there, I think the more likely somebody at least replies. Um and.
It looked good, I think the only thing, only comment we had was explaining what I and I is.
Yeah. Yeah, I put at the top, it was like, we're getting more water than we should, please help, like, cuz I just wanted to make it as like.
Short speed.
You know, like third grade reading level, odd colors, so that people will like, oh, what's that, and then like, it's a quick three check boxes. Um you said the plan was, can you easily include that mailing in the water bill, or how would you combine?
Water bill to, I was confused. Um. Because we have to do a separate.
Okay.
mailing, there's not going to be another.
Yeah, they mentioned that we thought, cuz I I question whether it's worth, you know. I think to do direct mail to the whole village is like four hundred bucks. And. Yeah, I just don't know between printing it and doing it, but it, I mean, it.
I mean, I think you had mentioned like informational sites, I think.
Yeah, I mean, also like.
Original intent, maybe.
Well, I thought we were gonna get this info when we were doing the inspections, lead line inspections.
I don't think that they got much. Then.
Yeah, I, that was a, I I, that's, that's my bad, I thought that we were doing them in tandem, and that was gonna be how we got enough data to justify this, so. Um I don't know, I just, what what do you guys think? I mean, I I just, my expectation is we'll get the free back.
We keep talking about it, I just say do it, like, we keep kicking the can down the road and not doing it, so at least we can say we tried it. If I and I is asking for it, and that's what they, you know, is part of this, then we need to show it, and I just say do it, and if we get ten back, then that's what we get, but at least be attempted.
Okay.
Right, but I just feel like we keep, we talked about this a few times, right?
I don't, I don't think we're gonna be any more successful than the door to door with this, I think.
Well, it was the main, it was the. Check when we were already in the main spot, right, so.
Okay.
That's the issue, it's like.
You're, you're. I'm trying to narrow down where there is.
I thought at one time there was like a.
I mean, I I think you, I think you basically gotta just do a camera survey of the system.
Um hard part is we just have to narrow down, narrowing down where.
Which portions of the system need to. I mean, it sounds like you've kind of got a, an idea of where where to look. And that's the only way you're gonna know definitively.
Yeah.
Is is.
I mean, the other thing we talked about, which I was always kind of against, cuz I think just like no one's gonna read the survey, no one's gonna read the notice, it says, don't panic on. October thirtieth, when we smoke everyone's basement, and no matter how many times we tell people that, there's gonna be a bunch of people who think their house is on fire and lose their shit. And they're gonna understandably be annoyed with us when they're like, we made them panic, but it's like, we only have so many mechanisms to inform people. We only have so many mechanisms to inform people. Most people don't pay attention to.
And once we send the mailer out to tell them about that.
I just don't think people will read it either.
Well, is that why we can say we sent it in the.
The players know when you're gonna do it. I think that's what they just explained.
They did.
And then there was, there was a bunch of calls, but I mean luckily.
If we ever get lonely.
Okay, but did, but did they get the information they needed?
Right, is that right?
I mean, that's the bottom line. We got, we, we gotta have that information.
Right. So I say send the mailer to tell people that that's happening.
Do you wanna spec out doing a smoke test then?
Yeah, we could.
Cause that'll get us the info.
I don't know. I mean, that's.
Yeah, I mean.
It's a one versus the other.
It's hard to smoke that.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you narrow down the, the reasons, what do you think?
Yeah.
It would be certain stretches of the village. It wouldn't be the entire village. So.
Good to know. Less chance for.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright, let's, um, let's do. I don't wanna do it in the screen, but you guys tell me how. Yeah. Let's, uh, do you guys wanna just take this offline and do like a, like email pros and cons and figure out what we wanna do?
As long as we follow through. As we keep doing this, then we go to my thing.
The hard part is it's just looking at the manhole plowing. It's kind of, certain areas have larger complexes. So it's kind of arbitrary. We looked at it during off hours and clothes were certainly last. There were still clothes there.
Yeah. Okay.
And then the last item, Madison Barracks. So I know at some point we met with. Um, and Lawler. Contract was gonna come in and try some methods to fix the ponding. On Madison Barracks. It kind of showed up unannounced and. Didn't really notify us and did some things and it doesn't look like it really worked. Oh, there's still bonding on the last page of that. There's kind of, kind of the same.
It's probably smaller. That looks smaller than before. Or was that just a Friday?
Uh, I think that was probably it had sat for a little bit longer.
I was gonna say, less than I saw, there was quite a bit more there.
It did do something further down and it did shrink it. So way down, you can see where there was a patch. So that did get smaller, but the other ones.
So the, the suggestion I made guys is, this is a suggestion. If we wanna get this resolved, that's one option. If I, we don't have to, but I, we've been going back and forth about this a lot. You know, paying DCA to try and meet these guys out there. It's just eventually. The question is like, if it's gonna require them redoing this entire park. Is that what we're gonna make them do to fix this problem? And it sounds like they would have to cut the asphalt out pretty much completely.
My only question is to our DPW crew and to our equipment. Cause originally we said we didn't wanna take this on because it was gonna be extra work. On our people. So I guess that's, I just want an update. Is it gonna, is it less? Is it more? Is it gonna cost us more? Is there a potential of, I don't know, curbing, breaking something?
No, I don't think it's gonna break anything. And create a few slippery spots for potentially, you know, potential access. I talked to Corey in length about this actually last week and. He thought it might be a good idea to actually trench drain that through there. Either.
Which, which Corey? Say Corey.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Let's trench drain me.
With the channels, same like you put in the, basically a gutter embedded in the ground. There's a metal grate on top and then.
About this why.
I don't, well, it's not the standard spec for a road. I think it's technically a road.
It's right at the seam.
I see.
So are you. Get over and then he could just do it and be done with it.
Are you, are you comfortable with these conditions, Lynn?
My, I think that should be perfect.
I do too.
Honestly.
I do too.
But, you know.
What?
Sometimes I get beat down a little bit and I'm like, well, let's just suck it and be done with it. I honestly don't think that that's the right age.
Okay, so would, would a insulation of a trench drain be?
Insulation of a trench drain is.
Acceptable?
I think it would be.
Well, why don't we price, why don't we price that? And then we.
Well, it's.
Tell Lawler.
Right, it's really not our responsibility to price.
No, no, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, is we price it and we say to. To Lawler, if you want us to take this over, then.
We gotta get rid of the water.
Then we need to get rid of the water. Uh, here's.
It will deteriorate.
The price for a, a French drain, a trench drain.
Yes.
You wanna install it? You want us to install it? You pay for it? Otherwise. Keep at it. Cause I, I can see the day when, when, when one of those residents comes out and slips.
Exactly.
And it's just like a skating rink down there in the winter time. It's in, and I'm surprised it hasn't happened yet, but it's gonna happen. And, and.
It's a liability issue.
It's definitely a liability issue.
So what I'm hearing is from our, from our engineers or DPW that, that we've gotta get rid of water and one way to do that is install it in trench drain.
That's one option. What's, why don't we just pursue? That's one option or they can dig up one of the catch basins and lower it. The water can go there. What happens is they gotta, they gotta catch basin here. They gotta catch basin here. There's like. Two inches of pitch from one to the other, just not enough to move the water. Cause it's like, what is it? Three hundred and fifty feet, three hundred feet, something like that. A little over hundred from one to the other. Whatever it is. It's just not pitch far enough to, you can't pitch it. It's not the blacktop guys. I'm not putting the blame on those guys.
Well, my, my thought on the trench drain was it would freeze as well. Right? It's not gonna be below the frost line. I guess it'd go freeze last.
Yeah, it would definitely freeze.
But it, we, it would be below, it would be below ground. You wouldn't be diving.
It fills in and ices in. We're still gonna have to.
If you have water coming into there, obviously it's warm enough to move water.
Okay.
And it will not take that long to dissipate out of that trench.
Do you think it won't ice up?
And you fill it with stone, right? You fill it with stone, like crushed stone and.
I don't know. Probably got a grate on it, doesn't it?
Yeah, okay.
It'll be a concrete structure with a grate on it.
Okay. Okay.
They probably, it would probably span from one catch basin to the other, right down the middle, right? So any, any water that went to the center would rain to the catch basin.
That makes good sense to me.
Well, me too. Corey was explaining it to me. It just.
So I guess the question is then, do we wanna? Have them do this? Or do we wanna say, look, we'll get a price, we'll get it done and you pay that and that's, then we can. I just don't wanna go back and forth for another.
I do not wanna do it.
Right, we'll contract it out if they.
Right.
Yep.
Get a contract about.
Right. Okay, that. Just give them the option.
Give them the option.
Because the issue is I know they're, they're looking at their, their bond. Release. If they don't have it released, they need to renew it and pay for a whole other year. So they're more inclined to say, hey, we'll pay you to do it now. And have us take care of it. If we can get it done. Because the, the problem is we keep going back and forth. Now, we don't have to do that. We can just say, no, like till it's fixed, this is yours. Here's our suggestion to fix it.
To be honest, I don't trust them. So I would rather get a price for it ourselves and tack it onto them and say, we're not giving you your bond release until you cut us the check to get it fixed.
Okay.
I mean, personally, we've been going around and around and around with them.
Okay.
And I don't trust them to fix it. So I would say you get a price from somebody that you trust.
Again, I don't think it's our responsibility.
I don't either. I don't either, but I don't trust them.
I think ultimately it's Lawler's responsibility. To do this, cause I think there's another engineer involved. There is. It works for them.
Right, right.
You know, if we're, if we're not gonna accept it, they kinda have to. Propose a, a solution. You know, bring it to our attention.
But we need, we, we, right, but we need, we need to prompt them to take that step. Uh, so basically, I mean, I have zero sympathy for these guys. Zero. So my feeling is. We, we could say to them, look, you have, you have your engineer. Design and spec a trench system. And instrument it for our review and then you install it. If you don't by such and such a date, then we'll task our, our village engineer with doing it and. We'll bill you for it. And we won't, we won't accept conveyance until that's done.
Yeah. I mean, the issue is like, what, what I kept telling them is they said, well, what do you wanna, what's the solution? I'm like, I don't, I'm not the, like.
Fix, fix the damn road. That's, that's the solution.
Have to be water.
Right, exactly.
You know.
It means to get some water to move or something.
Yeah, it's, it's not rocket science.
Your idea about putting that into the trench drain?
That's, that's all.
That's this week.
You're not gonna catch up to the pile.
No, it's, it's like, you can see, it's like kind of an V in the middle. You'd need to like have a specially designed per, it would.
Blacktop would be up. That far maybe above the drain.
I'd say if they have to renew the bond, then oh, well, let them renew the bond. That's how I feel about it. That's just, that's just me talking. Cause I know.
Alright, let me see. I don't know what the date is for the bond. So. Maybe we can get them to move quick if we, do you guys wanna?
They haven't moved quick yet.
No, I don't.
They do.
Well, this is a big, this is a big decision point. Cause they'll have to pay for this. So are you guys comfortable with a resolution to release them from the bond? Once Corey and Lynn clear it. And so we can tell them, hey, here's the, you can put the trench drain in. These guys, we give these guys the authority. Once they okay it, well, they can release the bond. That way they have the evidence. And if they have three weeks, they can gun for it. I don't, I don't know if they have three weeks or two weeks or a month, but I know they want it done.
I mean, I say if our engineer and our DPW supervisor says that it's, it meets our qualifications and our expectation, then yes, obviously I'm gonna defer to that.
But we need a vote that we, because we have to vote to release it. So we can vote to release a conditional on their approval of the final result. That way they know as soon as these guys say, okay, it's done. And if they can rush it before the next meeting or before they're run.
You know what? I don't wanna, I don't wanna let them off the hook at all.
Okay, no, we'll just wait.
You guys give it a thumbs up for both you guys. It's done.
And then we'll sell, we'll vote afterwards.
Yes, vote afterward. I don't wanna do a conditional one. I want them to do their job and fix it and then come back to me. And stop making us, like they haven't done anything on a rush.
Yeah.
Yet. If they do this in a rush because it's gonna cost them, then they'll be able to get it fixed.
We ultimately were just looking for drainage, okay? It's not. I don't think it's the village's responsibility. I mean, we were just kind of thinking outside what, what could, what could be done here. But ultimately. Lawler and their engineer kinda have to come up with a solution. They may say, well, let's bring our paper in again and try it again. And that may work. I don't.
How many, how many bites of the apple did they had already? Like three?
Yeah.
Um.
So.
Okay.
Yeah, I say.
No water. I don't know. Um, you've got free payouts in here. Right?
There's probably two from the Market Square Park. Um, and.
So I think we need to vote on. I've got Market Square Park ready. There's for sixty-four.
Probably two in there, right? Sixty-four and two hundred and twenty-three.
Two twenty-three and then there is the.
Was.
Marcelo's the five percent for.
One, one, twenty-three.
Yeah, that's on Monday. Yep.
Yep.
Those are the three.
Yep.
Projects.
Uh, so I think we need a vote on each. So just to be clear, the first one is. The final payment to lawman for phase one.
Which is sixty-four thousand.
Yes, which we've been through when we're happy with it. Everything's good. Okay.
Do you need a motion in favor?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to. The application nineteen and the amount of sixty-four thousand two hundred and twenty-four. With lawman.
Second to that. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yep. The second one is for.
Phase two.
Phase two substantial completion. So we're still holding back?
Yeah, there's still a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, which is more than, probably a little bit more than five percent.
Yeah.
Cause the handrails and other things.
So we're still holding back?
Yes.
Well, more than the remaining.
That's the work to be done at the time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Two hundred and twenty-three.
Yeah, so two twenty-three, three nine, three thirty-nine.
I'll make a motion to pay application eleven and the amount of two twenty-three, seven thirty-nine. And fifty cents. I'll second.
All in favor? And then we have, the third one is the Marcelo. Seawall intake. And that is one point one eight three. So this one isn't a, this is a substantial completion or this is just a progress?
This is just a progress. Would you help put that one, one bearing?
Uh, one, yeah, one point, one point two, a little shy of one point two. I'll change to you, Jim, but the rest of us.
I'll cover it. Yeah, I'll cover it. Yeah.
Um, yeah, I need a vote to.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to prove that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jim, that's a question for you, my friend.
We can, we, we can repay him.
Okay.
But we gotta move the money out of the class account.
Okay, so we'll need to either get me access or access or both or get Shannon to do it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll work on that.
Yes, you have access to the class accounting. So.
He's got, he's got all the logins, but it's by name. So that's the thing is we have to update it.
That's what it is. Yeah.
Peggy, do you think we should hit a quick resolution to do that in case they ask for it? To add myself and Dennis as on the class account? Who do you wanna do, Jim? Yeah, why don't we do Jim?
Yes, that's true.
That would be trapped him in for a little longer.
Not going anywhere, he says, so.
Yes. Alright, so I will make a motion to add myself and Jim Uhas as authorized users of the New York class account.
I'll second that.
Alright, any other questions, guys? All in favor?
Aye.
Well, yeah, I'm strict and then I'll just wait for.
Yeah, and we'll, 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 we have to talk to class. They will likely need that resolution. To authorize the change. And I think I, I don't know what their process. So it might be a little bit to get that all done. And then we'll get the money moved and then we'll get the, the data. Okay. You're not gonna get a second retirement party, okay?
Yeah. You'll be alright, Jim. Alright, it's got a little split out of it.
Anything else for BCA? Okay, friend. With Corey, like.
Fan on his truck wouldn't shut off. Should have truck issues. He got all the way to, I think the gas station out of three.
Alright, so we'll move on. What do you have for us from the clerk?
Not a lot of information. I'm wrapping up the most of the. School taxes, even though he defined his past and the stragglers and a lot of whispers still. And then. But, um, they're dependent business issues.
Good. Any questions for Peggy, guys? Alright, so on to community orgs. I know we got Scott here.
So obviously Helmand Bill's coming up. I know you've got that on the agenda later. So I'll save that till then, but. We've been advertising up for drums for the MWR. Or all of the gyms and other facilities to make sure Sackets Harbor is seen in front of them as well as a couple of radio stations. Through social media and also make sure, I mean, HICA is also part of the chamber, but. At the Deshawar presentation for the conference in Kinston here coming up in a few weeks. So it sounds like a really positive opportunity to. Broader picture of Thousand Islands. So.
I don't know. I think we're good. Thanks. To. I'm here for many other orgs. Who's, who's on Zoom? Okay. That was good. Alright, move on to board reports. Um, on the dog bar. So I just now had the bandwidth to be. Prep for a name option. It's a decent amount of work to make it actually interesting. So I'm thinking, I sent you guys the rules that we needed to have up. Um, I only made like two small changes. They're logged in the change logs from the rules that were sent from the insurance company. And they did say those are guidelines. Once those are approved, we can put a sign up and we can be officially open. We're kind of unofficially open right now. Once those are approved, we can put a sign up and we can be officially open. We're kind of unofficially open right now. Um. I think if we wanna do sell naming rights later to raise some funds, we can. But I don't wanna hold the whole thing up just because I haven't been able to do it. Um. An interim name is fine. I have two ideas. Sack it's dog park or Sack it's partners. Either is fine or any other idea you have. But I think we just pick something, put it on the sign with the rules. Doesn't have to be a large sign. It's expensive. It just goes at the top of the rules. And if later we wanna try and raise some money by doing the name thing, we can still do it. And it doesn't hold up the opening.
Robert, I have I have your the rules. Oh, my.
I saw you, but you know.
I think I looked at it, but I had spent a while.
I mean, I I think I made like two changes. I I wrote what I changed, so you can see.
I remember reading it, but it was a while ago.
Yeah. Yeah. So the name preference.
Second. Let's go generic for Sack it's dog park. Sure.
I'd still like to get the school involved and like a kid, let them draw something and help with the name. I think that would be a cool like logo to have a like do a contest at school.
Yeah. Yeah. Like, is that spring timeframe for that?
Yeah.
Contest. I mean, I think anything that brings attention to it.
Dog park right now.
Yeah.
Right.
May, you know, to say.
Yeah, we should do something for the top of the sign that says Sack it's Harvard, Dog Park.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to say like, yeah, I don't wanna build like a giant sign.
No.
But we just need the rule sign.
Signs take forever. So at this point, it could be next spring anyways, and by then we might have.
No, I.
Is there been activity done?
Inglewood will do it in a week or two. We don't need a giant one. It's just like a flat sign with the rules on it.
Have you have you um, wrote subject with Jen during your meetings?
I have.
Okay.
No, I.
That might mess up the.
Yeah, I kinda get her to.
Yeah. Get things going from her.
Yeah, I'll I'll make her to talk to her about it next time we chat.
Yeah. I think that'd be a great idea for. All schools.
School project.
Yeah.
Local competitions are fun.
Yep.
Cool. Um, yeah, if you guys wanna take a peek, in case you do have any, but I'll just.
I think it was fine. Nothing stood out to me when I read it first.
Sounds good. Um, electric car chargers, we talked about ARPA, um.
Certainly.
We need to we need to make our final call, so.
Yep.
Uh. Jim, Dennis, you guys know, I think we're still around fifty K, right? Left in our funds.
Oh, I I have no idea.
Okay.
Where are we on the?
The access control. I haven't got a full. I I I it's more than enough to do what we wanna do.
Okay.
Um, but I haven't like, I dug in a little bit, but I'm I need to do more work on it.
Because my thinking is if we have fifty K and we finish the doors.
Yes.
Yep.
That perhaps we just put another feeler out for community arcs to.
We can. Um, I do.
Instead of us trying to spend it.
I do have a explicit request from. Uh, Matt, who I told you didn't need to write anything else, thank you, just bring it to us of um, the paving over there is. Is a is a safety issue. There there's a lot of cracks in the curb. A lot of these guys are on walkers and canes. Um, I I I I'd be happy to put the remainder after the access control towards.
But it's like three hundred thousand or something.
It's not three hundred thousand. It's a stack of like hiring Albertine and Courier to design a fancy parking lot and then paying a third party person to do it, not just us. Doing it internally with the town and covering the added costs with some dollars. I think we can fix the issues that are there. You know, the fact that the ambulance can't gun it out of there without knocking people around, that's a problem for the annual to solve. But the sidewalks shouldn't be tripping people.
Is it the sidewalks that we're doing or the pavement?
I think it depends on the money that's left. So I think I we need to we need to allocate the ARPA money with by the end of the year. So unless we have something else, I think the way to do it is to say, we're gonna do the access control and the remainder of the money we can allocate towards that and we'll fix it in order of. Safety priority. It might only maybe it'll only be ten grand left, maybe it'll be twenty. Um, but we we legally, we have three meetings to decide what we're spending that money on. And then we have all of next year to spend the money. Um, so. You know, the we don't have to decide now, but we do really have only two more of these. So if there's not any other major.
I just wanna clarify what you're asking for. So you're asking for the rest of the money, but our crew is gonna be doing those repairs?
No.
That's why I'm asking for clarification. So you're.
We don't pave.
Okay. We don't pave and we don't do sidewalks.
When we do, so hold on, when we plan sidewalks, is it through the town? Like when we do the sidewalk.
No, we do our own sidewalks.
Yeah.
But you said paving, that's not.
Sorry, I in my mind, they're a type it's a type of paving. But yeah, the sidewalks are are a major part of the issue. Um.
Because I'm just saying, I don't wanna, I don't want to do anything that's gonna require extra work out of our crew without talking to them.
Of course. No, I'm I'm not. What I'm saying is unless we have another use that's reasonably significant, because it's not, you know, it's not just a thousand dollars left. I think the a good way to use or to commit the use of the rest of these is to do the access control that we talked about. And the remainder can be used for supporting getting their paving and sidewalks fixed. Whether we wanna be the arbiters of how that's used efficiently and what's the most effective, you know. What the highest safety per dollar savings we get is, or if we wanna just let them do that is up to the board. But I think unless we of our board, but unless we have another use for the ARPA money that we want to debate, I think it's a good one. I think it's, you know, it's a.
I'm not comfortable designating the money to them until you've expressed to the DPW exactly what it is you're asking of them, and they say, yes, we can do this, no, we can't.
I don't I don't.
They can, I don't I don't wanna designate money.
I'm not committing them to doing anything. I'm just saying whether or not we hire someone to do it, or we can give these guys to help, whatever we can. If we can't, that's fine. But I do think um, it's a reasonable use of the money. I mean, we use the money to support the library, the legion. Um. I I don't think it's out of the scope of what it was intended to be used for. Um, and there. Yeah, I mean, I it's not a trivial issue. I was over there a few times and it. Um, it's an easy tripping hazard. Uh, again, we don't need to worry about it now.
No, but we could commit the we could commit the the funding and with general language.
Yeah, we we don't have to say. I mean, I I think just saying it's gonna be the after the access control, the remainder will be used. Because that's all that we're required is to tell ARPA what we're using it for. It don't require us to say this exact.
Right.
Block. It's like if you're saying.
Right.
We're gonna replace the sidewalk or or fund, put these funds towards replacing the sidewalk. We don't even have to say we're gonna replace the whole thing.
I don't know if there's enough money to replace the whole thing. That's.
No, I would.
Probably not.
Maybe just say that the remainder would be in support of um.
Innovation.
Re- repairs to the sidewalk and or. Asshole.
Right, yeah.
Can we be vague?
I think.
That's what I'm saying. I think.
Support of repairs to the sidewalk is insufficient from what uh, Shannon and I have done those reports, and none of our other uses have been more worse than that. I think we literally said.
I just don't wanna lock us into something specific, but if we could be really vague about it. Um, I think, you know, and again, we've been working on the access doors for a while, so I don't know how much money is left.
Yeah, so let's let me let me get some numbers on the access control. But again, we there's no, we don't need to say yes now because. We're not gonna go fix paving in October.
No.
So or or not paving. What is it? Is it just sidewalks? Is that the word? Concrete. Okay, we're not gonna fix concrete.
Okay, because I'm thinking paving like the driveway and you're talking the sidewalk outside the door. They're two different things.
Fine, I just did not. I thought paving encompassed.
Yep.
What is the um, access control?
So Kelly, I I think it was Kelly's suggestion was um, to use the funds to upgrade our locks, our access for this building, the visitor center, basically. To modernize so that we can see who is going in and out instead of someone with a key was in this building. Um.
We spent a lot of money on cameras. My next follow up was to now change the locks on the doors to make them either key fob so that we can see who's in and out of a building. On all areas, whether it's the visitor center, whether it's the.
And the brains behind the cameras is the same system. So we'd only be buying the devices for the actual doors, the the.
Right.
The five hundred dollars per property part is the same as the cameras. So it would be a pretty efficient use of the funds. Because we already have the backbone.
Right, which is increasing the security.
So you just swipe a fob and.
Yeah, so you put you you wouldn't do them on all the fire exits because they're meant to be exits only. But anywhere where someone's gonna be able to come in and out, you just swipe a fob and then. Take logs who's there and you can revoke access without having to remake everyone's keys. Um. Yeah. So that was, I think we actually did vote on that. It's just that we have.
Just need information.
Rules. Yeah, I I just need to go and do the do the like work of figuring out. Yeah. So let me do that. I'll let Betsy know and then we can if we wanna vote on that or if anything else comes up, we can talk about it next meeting. But we don't need to know. All right, um. So I don't forget that. And we already talked about Dennis. That is. Yeah, that's my list. Oh, um, wait a second. Yeah, it's down here. Okay. I'm all set. Any questions for me, guys? All right, Ron.
Your report tonight, the uh, committee meeting actually had me speak, so I will follow up and afterwards, and I'll tell you guys what they said. Um, and then as far as LDC and the uh, the southern parcel property, more of a follow. Moving forward with that, if you've got BCA joining in on the conversation. And they were taking the lawyers next. So we're making progress, I think, on the uh, southern parcel.
Are you surveying that today? Are you surveying it?
I think so.
Yeah, they were down there.
I think so. We'll move forward. It's great. Good news, right? So I think come springtime, we're gonna have a bunch of different parcels, you know, spots partialled out, but we can actually. We gotta find a developer now. You picking yourself?
Uh, no. Um, not moving.
Yeah, can't get away from uh, dad.
Nice story. That's all I have for your questions. Any questions for Ron, guys? All right, Kelly?
We have nothing. The only thing I needed was an update on that ARPA check. For the first part.
I sent that to you again, so we'll make sure that gets in next month.
And they are, um, they will have the fire truck in Halloween, though.
Great.
Um, three people volunteered to do it. They just didn't know where to put the truck. I told them to put it down in front of Market Square Park and bring their property and just plant a spot.
They'll be next to actually it's probably a good thing. They'll be next to the chainsaw wood guy, so. Put them out.
Put out there. Just make sure that's.
I don't know who Steve Solomon was contacted by somebody in the their original request. They asked for something else.
In the village office, like he came in to get the part of her messed up and she talked to him in the airbar.
So we already know.
Scott Tracy's the chair for them. So if they need to.
But they were already in here.
Yeah.
Steve was.
Yeah, when uh, because she got a truck from Smithville, too.
Okay.
Cool.
I think.
And she told him she would give him candy if they.
Well, originally, it was just for PR and then because they buy candy to stand out Halloween night and they were trying to not have to do both because candy is expensive, so.
Uh, yeah, cool. That's great.
Oh, yeah.
Any questions for Kelly? All right, Greg?
Um, my favorite topic, um, capital reserve fund. Are we making any progress on?
I think we actually are uh, were we using that up this year with the roof? Not to punt if we don't need to, but if we don't have any capital reserves, reserves, we don't need a fund.
Well, no, but we we have excess tax revenue that.
We will next year also. Yeah, so that will that will be important. I think I think it's worth doing. Um, do we wanna? Do you wanna do it like in a work group or?
That that's fine. I just think we.
Department should.
We have a.
Ideas of what they need.
You know, I think we have an obligation to the taxpayers to tell them what we did with that additional revenue that we collected.
But it's not for. I believe the additional revenue is for net. Am I getting it wrong? Is it already being collected?
Yeah, it was collected. Yes.
All right. So, oh, okay. So it's more than we originally, because we originally had like a fifty K. We so we ended up.
We left the tax rate the same, but because of the um, the reassessment.
Right, when we were budgeting, we didn't have that number fully, right? We didn't know the full extent of the increase because it hadn't gone.
I think the budget went from like three ninety something to five fifty or something like that. So there's about two hundred.
I mean, it's significant.
So you've only spent thirty of it on the roof, so the roof doesn't get us on that.
Right.
Talking the other.
Right, and that that was the earlier question about whether it was replacement versus repair, because a replacement probably would have taken care of that, but sure, since we didn't go that route.
I see. Okay, okay.
And you were talking about because we can't have a savings account because we're a minister.
Yeah, we need we need it solved by the end of the administration, which is pay. And it's not just an account. It's we have to have like. Jim, Jim has and I have talked about this a lot. So we we basically need to have a allocation of funds. So we say, okay. The DPW has these three items that are large expenses that are bigger than a single capital year or single tax year can handle. We need to save for them over time. They are A, B, and C, and we are saving towards X, Y, and Z goal. That's the DPWs. Then we need it for each group. Um, so I don't.
Specifically, we were talking about like infrastructure stuff, like roof repairs and those kind of things that we, they're very pricey. And that we can't always put them in an annual budget that we might need to put.
Well, there's like standard depreciation tables, right? Where you can say, okay, this building depreciates at this amount. But I think we need to think through. Not just the buildings, but other things like the equipment. And I think the best way to do it is to.
So I'm just looking at the fact that, you know, we haven't done some.
Right.
Maintenance and infrastructure of just our facilities that probably need to be updated, that we could put that some of that.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
The product of some sort. Um, but.
All right, let me let me just.
Do we need to just tell the resident?
Let me find like two or three examples of capital fund agencies from around here. And we'll just start with that, send that around, and then we can start like backfill up, right? I'm sure some other villages have a capital fund policy. They're all public. We can find one that looks similar to what we need, then we can use that as our starting start.
And does that make sense, what we're asking for?
Yeah, I I think to this point, the village hasn't set up anything because the village has always spent. Before you you had a chance to accumulate.
Yeah.
Right.
A reserve, you know, like.
Well, we have the reserve for the water.
Yeah.
That was specifically earmarked for that.
Did we have to do something special with that money?
Uh, you have to make it, you can make it as broad or as specific as you want, like a building reserve.
Yes.
You could entitle it that.
Okay, so that's the kind of stuff.
And then we can and we can do it pretty vague, and then the state will say, we don't like this, make it more specific next year.
Okay.
So I don't think we need to go too crazy. Um.
So we don't do that until our next budget cycle. We need to add.
Yeah, the at the basically, anything that rolls over from this budget, we need it done so that we're explaining why and what for it's rolling over. Um, so we have until May, but we do need to start.
Yeah, because.
Coming with the buckets we want and what amount we like if we have. You know, a hundred K left over, we need to say, okay, twenty percent of any allocated surplus is going into our vehicle replacement fund. Ten percent is going into the fire department vehicle replacement fund. Thirty percent is going into our building maintenance and and repair fund. And then if we need to further justify those, we can start. Itemizing the different buildings and vehicles if the state wants us to do that, and they say that's not specific enough. But the first year, we don't need to go crazy because.
I mean, honestly, the the I think we talked about this a while ago. You mentioned the fire department, not that I'm saying that they have to do it, but I wanna uh. Somebody's making a bunch of changes to their fire department that they.
OSHA regulations.
Thank you. They're starting January one that we might not have a choice.
Yeah, that'll be an.
So having the X, yeah.
Every like fire department, including the city water town, is not viable.
Right.
Because it makes you replace your every tire on your fire truck.
Every seven, every year.
Every seven years, whether it needs it or not, and there's the trucks.
A fifteen year life cycle on apparatus. So our trucks are definitely, we would only have one truck left, and it's a pickup. So I'm either gonna fight a fire with a pickup truck. So um, that's just throwing that out there.
Yeah.
Potential, hopefully by then OSHA won't do it, or there will be some changes. But if we don't have to decide till May, that could be something that we could help to.
Okay.
Now, remember, remember in this year's budget, the board board like one point five million?
Yes.
Because you didn't know with the.
Yes.
LWRP.
Yeah, the interest on that over the few months is not bad, so we'll.
So I, that added to the cash flow.
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, that's true.
Okay.
Well, I think I think my point is that the taxes have been collected and now people are saying, okay, what are you doing with that money? And I don't wanna say, um, we're gonna let you know by May.
Sure.
When it's October. And we've been talking about this for several months already.
Yeah.
Um, it's not hard to to identify a handful of projects.
Yeah, I mean, we can we can call them out and say it's it's, you know, number one is like this roof was an example of one that.
Yeah.
We did not re- we didn't fully know when it would be needed.
Right. Right.
Um, but we knew it was coming, and this year it happened, so that's an example you can give, and I would say, you know, if we wanna pick out a few other items of. You know, we want, we have some funds that are gonna go towards, uh, new fire apparatus, if that makes sense.
Yeah, well, what I'm asking is, can we formalize this, can we set up a capital reserve fund and can we identify? How generically you want to, what that. Fund is gonna be used for, and if it's, if it's as simple as building repair.
What I'm hearing is you really wanna be in charge of the capital reserve fund.
If, if that's what it takes to move it forward, I'd be glad to. Nothing's happened.
Yeah, I'm happy to help, but I think if you wanna take, take that under, um, that'd be great, um, because.
Okay.
Do you, I agree with you, it needs to move forward in whatever capacity.
And, and this is.
How much are we over?
I think it was like three ninety something to five fifteen or something like that, so we, yeah, so.
And, and the thing is, this isn't gonna happen again, because next, right, the next time around, we're gonna adjust the tax rate down.
I think it's important to see where we are, because there are things that have increased in cost, so like, we'll know more towards the end of the year, how much actual buffer we had. And what things we need to, um, plan for. Because we don't wanna, you know, one of the things that I think Jim did, which probably wasn't popular at the time, was not lower water bills when you could have. Which meant, if he didn't do that right now, we'd be sitting on an extra million dollars in debt.
You'd have, would have had to borrow.
Right, 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 and, and, and my, part of my argument is that, you know, if, if we hadn't collected. This additional revenue and, and we had a catastrophic failure of this roof, let's say, for example, we would have to borrow money.
Right.
At a certain rate of interest to, to fix that, now we have this money.
Yeah.
Let's put it in a fund, let's designate it for wha- whatever, and.
I just, what Al was talking about is, is the, is the water intake. Has nothing to do with the tax rate increase.
No, it's just the same content.
No, but it's the same, same idea, same idea, is, is it's a rainy day fund.
We don't, we wanna keep this budget the way it is now with the new assessment, we have to allocate it, or we have to lower taxes like you said, so we have to wait. But we do, there are reasons we would need to have overflow in a given year, to make sure that, and, and to, to Jim's. Point, whenever he said he didn't, you know, anytime we talked about this before, he was like, well. They are kind of BS, right, you make a capital fund, you put it in, but then if you've saved thirty grand for a truck for Lynn next year. But the roof breaks, you can move the funds over, you pay for the roof, and you deal with it as it comes, we're, we're not. Gonna be sophisticated enough to correctly call our shots for every emergency.
Okay, but, but I don't like the idea of, of this, you know, two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollars just floating out there somewhere, that's what he's doing, that's what's going on right now.
No, well, I mean, there's.
Those were water rates, those were not tax dollars, we're talking apples and oranges right now, not changing the water rate. Is not the same thing as not changing the tax rate.
Well, we, we can change it if we need to change it, the point is. If you run the village water, the village sewer, or the village operating budget on razor thin, no buffer exceptions.
I think we're gonna just spend every dollar we collect, that's kind of the point of tax dollar, we're not supposed to have the same.
Tax revenue equals.
It's, it's not, it's not correct, we, we are not supposed to have unallocated capital reserves, because the, it is, the reality is, you're not gonna replace your buildings. One fortieth at a time over forty years, so we have to have that, that's the, and, and we just need to get a little bit tighter on what that means and, and the math, so. I don't, I don't disagree with you, it's just one of many things that we need to move on.
I think step one, then by the bucket, step two, allocation of buckets with the.
If you guys wanna start kinda coming up with how you wanna allocate things, I'll try and find a couple examples and I'll send them your way. We can see if there's, you know, I don't know if Clayton or Kate Vincent or Henderson has these, and we can.
School districts do it all the time.
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm, I mean, I'm sure the language is very similar.
Yeah, yeah, I just think I.
And, and you know, school districts, if, if, you know, if they. Hoard money, they get, they get slapped on the hand for doing that, I mean, so.
No, and, and, and that is, we, we, I think it was twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, the village did get audited and was kinda chastised by.
Right.
The state auditor for not having them better defined, right?
We had two and a half billion in excess of water, and the state wanted to know why. And the village board said, we are gonna do this water intake project, and it's gonna be spent by then.
Yep.
And that was a kosher in the state's eyes.
Was or was not? Okay.
You're not supposed to hoard money.
Right, 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 right.
But since it. It cost village residents less, the board did the right thing and took the heat on it.
Yeah, there's not, they don't have any.
Took the heat on it to save the taxpayers money.
It was better to take it home now and pay.
Right, that's what, that's what I'm saying is, is w- we're in a better situation, but we need to have.
They don't, yeah.
At least conceptually planned for.
You know, they have guidance and they have reports, and their reports are meant to inform both, so that if we're. If we're screwing it up, right, the state auditor comes in and says, here's a report with, they can't kick us out, they can't change the budget, we're elected.
Right.
But it's for the village residents to know, hey, you should. Know about this, and then they're supposed to hold us accountable, but if we say, here's why we're doing it. There's no like, you can't get fired by the state auditor for your job if you think you're doing it well, so it's, that's kind of the idea, but I, I agree with you, we can move on this, so I'll try and find some examples. Okay. That's it. Anything else, guys, anything else, Greg?
Okay, I'm good, that's it for me.
Okay, any questions for Greg?
Okay.
Okay, there you are.
Uh, the library is preparing their annual fundraising drive, so look for those mailers coming out soon. Um, and thanks for dimming the lights. How cool were those Northern Lights?
It was really neat, I could only see the, uh, the color at first, there's no motion, but then I. My, uh, new alarm clock, the Husky, wanted to pee at two thirty, and it, you could actually see the, the, like, the, the wind of the lights, it was very weird. So I woke Mary Grace up and she was not happy with the answer, she got outside, but then she was like, all right, you're right, it was worth getting.
Yeah, our whole neighborhood, everyone turned off their lights in the house on our street, and, uh, it's pretty cool.
Yeah, that's neat, and, and, and all of our computers did explode, which is nice.
We're all still here.
Yeah, it's a neat, a neat feature of the, of the new ones is you can dim them, so I think all of them are riding at ninety percent as the default. Um, and then I have a few where people were like this shining at my house, I dimmed it a little and I took it off for sure.
Was that just like a toggle?
It's right in the software, yeah.
Oh.
It's neat, takes about three minutes to change them.
And, and you, can you do it by?
It's a dual light, you can do it by.
Texas street, whatever.
Yeah.
You have body lights?
Alright, so you can't, they don't do strobe lights. To protect the epileptics among us, you know.
We could spot, we should have.
Yeah. All right. So the dank reports, uh, almost dead even this time. Did happen around this time of year, about ten million meter and eleven coming through. Um, yeah, back to the old INI stuff.
Yeah.
All right, so old peasants, we had the job postings, um, did we want Peggy to post both the treasure and the grant writer? When she has the bandwidth to.
I think we need the treasure posted immediately, because we need that built.
Yep.
We got agreement or, I thought we were just putting it to town.
Yeah, if you have something in writing.
We don't, but we also have budgeted for a part-time job and we only have half a year left, so.
I'm not sure I'm comfortable with a full-time grant writer.
Oh, no, I'm not, I, I don't think we, I'm just saying, like, if, if they don't wanna come in, we can, this first half of the year, until their next budget rolls out. We can support it because.
But it's still a part-time position.
Yeah, we could, I don't think we're gonna find a full time, I don't think we'd have necessarily worked for it, but. All right, um, the solar array at Harbor Heights, we did get approved by National Grid for, uh, the location. Which does mean, um, it's. Ninety-nine point nine percent certain that all of our locations will meet that approval, um, I have a call with AJ V. The guy from Fourth Coast about what next steps are and what they mean, um, because he told me what the next step is, and I didn't understand that. What he was talking about, so I've not actually gotten him on the horn yet, cause this is sort of new, um, but it is moving and. So we got the okay at least.
So that will help them get their.
Yeah, that'll get them some money, um, and, uh, yeah, so. More on that later, uh, Halloweenville, uh, we. It was in the application to keep everything the same, we do explicitly have to call out a open container waiver if we want to do that. Uh, I called Tracy when Peggy said, oh, they, they're not doing it this year, and she said, no, the application said keep everything. But we need to explicitly vote to do that, so if we want them to be able to do that, we have to vote on it now.
Did they do it last year?
They did, and. They did, and, cause they have, uh.
It's got less down. Oh.
It's all the way up from, from Broad. Yeah, and it's like noon to four.
So it's the open street. It was similar turnout from last year.
So we close it in the morning and then, yeah, um.
Yeah. I think more people have gone to Trump.
I mean, it's the weather, last year the weather was, it was like seventy-eight degrees and then the next day was thirty. So if we can replicate that, I think it'll be a success again.
So do you need a motion to have an open container?
Yeah, originally to waive open container enforcement on main street.
All right, I'll make a motion to waive open container the day of Halloween though. And that's from. From two. From noon to four.
Okay.
A second.
All right, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and we already talked about the charging stations, so we don't have any new business. All right, any public comment? Any public comment on Zoom, if you're talking, you're muted. All right, I'll end public comment and entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to adjourn meeting.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Nick. Hey, your own motion, nonsense. We got a full, full heater today. Why?
It's cause you don't repair it.
Yes.
High levels.
I'm Sarah, by the way.
Or kit, or vehicle.
I brought him, he's falling out, like, what's the heck?